Okay, let's go ahead and get started. I'd like to welcome you to tonight's St. Louis County Planning Commission Public Hearing. The purpose of this meeting is to hear petitions for our request for zoning. Our special procedure permits. I'm Wayne Hillsinger, Chairman of the Commission. And in addition to the other Commissioners, we also have with us Gail Choate, Acting Director of Planning and the planners assigned to tonight's petition. We'll follow the following procedures. The petitioner will be allowed 15 minutes to present their petition. Anyone wishing to speak will be allowed three minutes. And the petitioner will then be allowed five minutes to answer any questions. The Commission may ask questions of the petitioner or anyone speaking. No vote will be taken tonight. A vote will be taken on these petitions sometime in January. If more information is required, the vote could be delayed. And with that, Mel, you want to explain to the participants?
Sure. So all of the attendees are muted right now. When we get to your petition, the petition you're interested in, you can click the raise hand button, which should be next to your name on the participant list, or maybe in the bottom right of the screen. After the public hearing, when you leave the meeting, a survey will pop up asking if you are in favor, opposed, or with concern regarding any of the petitions to indicate sort of the feeling of the crowd. So that's not binding on the Commission, but it will be part of the record.
Okay, with that, we'll hear tonight's first petition, which is PC 21-20 Eco Site LLC.
Okay.
For CUP and a C2.
So the first item is PC 21-20. It's located on the east side of Laramore Drive as it intersects with Trampi Avenue. So the land uses in the area are generally single-family residential, but there are some institutional and a little bit of commercial uses to the north and to the west. But vast majority is single-family residential. So this is the site as it looks today. This is looking southwest through the site. There's an existing telecommunications tower on the site as well as a small parking area. This is looking east along Trampi Avenue. So this is along the north side of the property. This is looking south directly through the property. This is looking southwest along Trampi and Laramore where they come together. This is looking south again through the site. This is looking north along Laramore. This is looking northeast and there's some buffering along the northeast side of the property, some vegetation. This is looking north and you can see that vegetation again on the right side of the screen. That is looking south directly through the property. That is looking southwest towards Trampi Avenue. And this is looking east along Trampi. It's basically a lane on this end of it. And it's looking north along Laramore towards the single-family residential uses. And next we will have the presentation from the petitioner.
Russ, do you have, I will make you the presenter so you can share your screen.
Okay.
So you should be able to do that now.
Good evening. My name is Russell Bean with Selective Solutions. My address is 340 Marshall Road, Valley Park, Missouri, 63088. I'm here tonight to request a conditional use permit for a 114-foot monopole-style telecommunications tower. And this tower is existing, a very brief history. This site was taken through and permitted several years back. This was not one of mine, so they were, they did apply for it. And in the C2 district, towers are allowed to 100-foot permitted, up to 120-foot with an additional carrier. The company that took this through misunderstood that to mean that as long as it was built for additional carriers, that it was permitted to 120, not that it actually had to have two existing carriers. It was taken through, approved through site plan review and then through PAC and then permitted for 114-foot. We were then hired to help T-Mobile upgrade their equipment on the tower. Was brought to our attention that the tower was actually non-compliant because it was a one-carrier 114-foot tower. Therefore, we were requested to take this through and clean up the zoning on the site. The tower, as it's built, is 114.7-foot tall and that's to the tip of the lightning rod. The tower meets even at the 114-foot mark. It meets all the setbacks. This is public right-of-way, 111 feet to the other public right-of-way, 117 feet. And then this property does have split zoning. And we are 116 feet to the split zoning line. So we do meet all the setback requirements. The property to the south is also zone C2. We do have the 10-foot or 10 or 15-foot, I'm not sure, setback to the fence line. That's the tower as it stands today. And that's the aerial view of the existing tower. And as I said before, it was permitted at 114 feet and that is just due to the the company that hired did not understand and presented it to the county as a multi-carrier pole. It would be my request that you would grant our conditional use permit for 114-foot, 114.7-foot telecommunications tower. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? I have, Russ, I got one. Will this become a multi-carrier tower or will it remain mono?
Yes, it's, this is actually for Eco Site and they were actually just bought by Vertical Bridge, who's the third largest cell tower company and they are constantly marketing this. This really is, Eco Site wouldn't have built it if they didn't have potential for multi-carriers. So yeah, they, they, they will, there will eventually be multi-carriers. And it was, was built to accommodate three additional carriers.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, we thank you.
Thank you.
Mel, you want to go ahead and take comments?
I don't see anyone right now, but if you would like to speak regarding this petition, click the hand next to your name, but I don't see any speakers for this petition.
Okay. Seeing none, we do not need rebuttal and that concludes this hearing.
Thank you and everyone have a nice evening.
You too. We'll go on to PC 22-20 STL Cube 1 LLC.
All right. This property is located in South County at the northwest corner of Lindbergh Boulevard and Teson Ferry. You can see it there outlined in red. It's surrounded by some commercial uses that are frequently found along arterial-type roads, a lot of auto service and auto sales, as well some single-family residential beyond these commercial areas. So this is the site today, looking west along Lindbergh. Now, this is looking east along Lindbergh. So this is the southern frontage of the, of the site. This is looking northeast through the site. It used to contain a fast-food restaurant. This is looking directly across Lindbergh, so looking south from the property. This is looking northeast again through the site. This is looking northwest through the site. Now, this is looking southwest at the intersection of Lindbergh and Teson Ferry. There's another fast-food restaurant directly to the southwest. This is looking north along Teson Ferry. So this is the western edge of the property. This is looking west through the property at the, there's some fencing there to buffer it from the property to the north and to the west. This is looking south through the, through the property. This is looking north again at the Mr. B's Pool Center is directly to the north. This is looking east towards Teson Ferry. And next we will have the petitioner's presentation.
Joshua, do you have the PowerPoint? Or does Troy? Joshua? Oh, you're pretty faint. All right. Will you have the PowerPoint?
Yeah, sure.
That's going to be.
Okay, Troy, making you the presenter now.
Thank you very much. I am now the presenter. Can you guys see my screen?
Not yet. You'll have to click the share screen button at the bottom.
Oh, there it is. There it is.
And then, there you go. It's coming up.
Awesome. Awesome. Well, I'd like to start by saying thank you so much for, you know, taking the time to meet with us. And I was a little disappointed. We didn't get the opportunity to meet in person. I always enjoy getting, getting out and seeing more of this country. For the record, my address is 904 Tomlinson Drive, Lutes, Florida, 33549. So this is, this is our new normal for public hearings. So someone in my office together a beautiful presentation for you guys. And then hopefully my computer doesn't freeze up and we can get through this painlessly. Before I jump into the presentation, I want to talk a minute about take five oil change. That's what we're requesting. They're, they're a little bit different than the old Jiffy Loop format. If you, if you look at their projects, I think the biggest difference you're going to see is that you stay in your car. I know, new to the Missouri market, but essentially it's a drive-in oil change. Everybody stays in their car. They're very concerned with the building, very concerned with their presentation. I think you saw, you know, those existing photos of what's actually on site today. We have every intent of improving that. Also, always want to hit on it. It's a very low-impact development. They have typically equivalent utility demand of a single-family home. The transportation-wise, they generate about 120 trips per day based on the ITE. But real market data suggests that they're generating much fewer trips than that. And this is a redevelopment. If you look at the existing use was a QSR. That's a high utility demand, high concerns with fire, high concerns with traffic. We want to come in, we want to, we want to beautify that site and do a very low-impact development here. So I'm going to try to stumble my way through this presentation and it's very well done. Existing zoning on this site are, here is the jurisdiction. It's all St. Louis County. Look at that beautiful, beautiful rendering we have there. Project location, as we talked about, it's over on Lindbergh Avenue and I'll show you guys just kind of zooming out as you're familiar with the area where we're at. Like was mentioned in the, my staff, this is, you know, all surrounding commercial area. We're required per note, per this section of the code under C21 that this is required as a conditional use permit. We aren't requesting any change in zoning. If you look at the future land use, we are completely consistent there. So no prop plan amendments will be required. If you look at all the lot frontier and in a few slides, you're going to see our site plan here. We meet all the requirements of the code. So I want to emphasize that we're not requesting any waivers or variances. We only want the conditional use permits. A little bit about the general processing that was provided to us from staff going on. So, you know, here's the checklist, everything we provided to staff. They've already had a chance to review this. I believe they've given us the okay on that. Looking at the survey, here's kind of the existing survey of what's out there today. The next slide features, I believe, the topo of the existing site. I do want to mention also, these are our construction plans. Want to mention also per, you know, current standards, we are going to be reducing the amount of impervious area on site. We're providing, I believe, 13% more green space based on what's out there today. Quick run-through of our plans, demo and existing conditions. This is our site plan. Again, as we mentioned, we need all the, all the code criteria. Draining and drainage, as I mentioned, we're reducing the amount of impervious surface as well as existing the, or preserving the existing drainage pattern out there today. Couple of detail sheets, which will protect the whole review and then obviously adding some landscaping, trying to make the site look as good as we can. So, you know, again, thank you for your time. To summarize, you know, you meet the full intent of your code. I know that our staff who has been extremely helpful throughout this process and helping us navigate this, they did say that one of the concerns they typically see has to deal with signage and lighting. So as far as signage is concerned, we can be very flexible. We're not a big marketer in terms of signage. We typically do a small five-by-eight monument sign. And obviously we want to maximize visibility as best we can, but signage can be very flexible. And of course also on the lighting. Now, we are like, there is some residential to the north and to the south here, but nothing immediately abutting us. Of course, we'll be, we want to be good neighbors and we'll be flexible any way we can. But as far as lighting and signage are concerned, I don't think there's anything really out there that we're too concerned with. Moving on to comments and questions.
Okay, questions? Anyone? Quick question. What are the hours of operation?
They typically do a 12-hour, eight to eight or seven to seven. That's usually based on what they, what market data suggests to be the most optimum. But usually seven to seven or eight to eight is what you're going to see.
How many days a week?
Seven.
Seven, okay. I'm sorry. About how many employees at one time?
Three.
Okay. How many bays?
On this site, we're a three-bay.
Three-bay, okay. All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. Melissa, you want to go to comments?
Sure. We have a comment from Terry Crowder. Terry, you were unmuted to give your comment.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Good. You've had me muted for the whole meeting and the phone number on your card, I tried calling it. I could hear you speaking, but I couldn't get a comment on it. I'm calling about a cellphone tower that you're wanting to build.
Oh, okay. That was the previous petition?
Right. I know, but you had me muted. It kept telling me on here that I was muted. The host muted me.
I had not seen your hand raised. I apologize. Could we take?
Yeah, let's go ahead. Go ahead. Give us your comment on the prior.
I apologize for that.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I own the driveway that the last company used to come in and build that thing and looked at the plans and tried to work with them as much as possible. They promised us all kinds of things. They destroyed my driveway, which we paid for. It's a, it's a St. Louis County non-maintained road, but we paid for the backtopping of the road. They promised me that when they were done, they would come in and repair it or fix it. Nobody showed up. They had to come back twice to fix the drainage because they dumped all of the water drainage onto the neighbor's property, which is adjacent to mine. So I'm really not too happy. Plus, they said they had permits that were all legit and that they could build it up to 90 feet. Now I find out it's 114 feet. Now, is this going to be a separate tower or are you just adding on to the top of the one that's existing?
They're not doing anything to the existing tower. Bringing it in. No, they're just bringing it into conformity.
Well, they're not changing anything.
Correct. The existing tower, I believe, is 114 feet. So they're just not doing anything. They just cannot get permits for a second antenna co-location until they have the conditional use permit.
I see. How do I go about getting them to repair the road that they destroyed with the heavy equipment? The driveway that they used.
You can, you can certainly have a conversation with them, but we'll, we'll take your comment that you are not satisfied with that existing condition.
I'm not satisfied with the fact that they gave me their word and that they were going to fix the road and they didn't. They never came back. So my $12,000 driveway is still in ruins. The blacktop driveway that we paid for.
But this is a new owner of the, of the property, but we can ask them to address it.
Okay.
So the first petitioner is not on the call anymore, but we will forward your comments to them.
Okay. And are they going to be, so they have to alter this existing one in any way?
No, sir.
Yeah. Is that a no or a yes? I'm sorry.
No, sir. No, no changes.
No change. Okay. That's what I need to know.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go back to comments for PC 22-20.
I don't see any other, any other speakers.
Okay, then we don't need rebuttal. So this concludes the hearing on this petition.
Thank you so much for your time. Thank you.
And we'll go to the last petition tonight, which is PC 23-20 Club Car Wash Operating LLC.
Okay, so this site is located in the Afton area on the south side of Graveway Road, west of Teson Ferry. You may recall that we had a request for a conditional use permit for this same site for Panera at the end of 2019 and this commission did vote to grant that conditional use permit. But since then, there has been a new, a new proposal for the property, but it is the same site. So the site is outlined here in red. Like I said, it's along Graveway Road. So there are many, you know, various commercial institutional uses in the area. And then some multiple family and a lot of single-family residences. So here is the site looking south from Graveway Road. The building on the left with the blue sort of roof is the breakfast and burgers restaurant. And then the white building on the right side is an office in the rear portion of the site. So those are the two existing structures on the site. This is looking east along Graveway. So you can see the breakfast and burger structure. Looking north, northeast across Graveway Road, the Grasso Plaza Retail Center is on the north side of Graveway. Looking east, looking south, southeast into the site. Looking south along the eastern property line, you can see the Missouri American Water Towers there. And then further south, you can see some of the Lutheran High School South Campus. Looking southwest is the adjacent Ace Hardware Store. Another look west. And then, as I mentioned, to the south, southeast are the water towers and some Lutheran South property. And then we would have the petitioner presentation. I don't see the petitioner present. I don't see them. Anyone?
In attendance on the phone? Please raise your hand if you are there. Anywhere?
Let me see. There are some call-in users, but I, if you've called in for audio and you're the petitioner, I've unmuted some call-in users.
Steve Randall? We are here.
Who is it?
On the chat, it says Steve Randall is here.
Okay. Steve, do you have a PowerPoint?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Okay.
Can everyone hear me?
You don't have a, you don't have your site plan or your presentation?
We do have a site plan. We do not have a presentation necessarily as far as PowerPoint's concerned.
Do you have the site plan to show?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'll make you the presenter so you can share your screen.
Thank you. Can everyone see that all right?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect. All right. My name is Steve Randall with Capron Engineering here representing Club Car Wash. The address is 8 East Main Street, Winsfield, Missouri, 63385. We're here to keep the same C2 zoning for the shopping district, but to ask for a conditional use permit to allow for a car wash, in this case, an automatic car wash. It's a 1.1-acre site that we plan to redevelop, pretty much take out everything on the site and put in what you see here in the site plan. And a couple of things to go over that may be a little more important. It's a 5,600-square-foot building and it's a single tunnel with back bays in the center there with two aisles coming into it. And as far as entrances go, we're going to keep the exact same entrances except for the third entrance. It's currently to the east. It's not shown here because we're taking it out. So we're actually going to reduce the access onto Graveway Road. And then we're going to add green space to the site. Currently, as you can tell from the previous photos, it's very, very impervious. It's almost entirely paved. In this case, we're going to add quite a bit of green space on the southern and on the eastern side and also to the interior on the islands. These are going to be sawed and then we're going to have water quality for the site with a hydrodynamic separator to the south. And anything other than that, I'm open for questions.
Okay, questions? Anyone? Commissioners? What's your hours?
Monday through Saturday is seven to eight and Sunday is seven to seven.
How many employees on site?
Roughly four to five, depending on the day or shift.
Is this a full-service automatic car wash?
Yes, it is.
You do inside and outside?
Oh, I'm sorry. No. It, it's the outside is automatic and the back bays are up to the clients themselves, the customers.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else? Questions? Do you have any renderings of, of the building, the tunnel?
Not handy. I do not. We can send them to you tomorrow.
Okay, if you would, please.
Yeah, there's a very nice example that we just put in right there off of Lusher Road near Parker. It's a fantastic-looking building and site kept impeccably.
What about signage?
Normally, there's two signs on the building itself. One larger and one smaller, depending on the side that's facing the road. And there is going to be a pylon sign in the northwest corner, right there along the edge, right here.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Anyone? Okay, Mel, do we have any?
We have a few speakers.
Okay, go ahead.
We'll start with Myron Kane. As a reminder, each speaker has three minutes. Myron, you are unmuted to give your comment.
Thank you. I'm the Facilities Director for Lutheran, the Lutheran High School Association. I have responsibility for the Lutheran High School South property immediately south of this location. We've been doing some cleanup on our side of this property boundary. There was a bit of a dumping area. We've been doing some cleanup on our side of this property boundary. There was a, a bit of a dumping area. And we've been cleaning up garbage and removing brush and such. That's revealed that there's a pretty substantial runoff problem from the property as it currently exists. So Steve, I really, I really appreciate that you're addressing some kind of a hydrodynamic solution on the south side. Will the property be regraded so that the, the impervious surfaces don't, don't result in the runoff that's, that's currently causing challenges?
Okay, we'll have you answer that on rebuttal.
All right. Those are the only topics I wanted to raise. I appreciate your attention.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next we'll go to Andrew. Andrew, you are unmuted.
Hello. I'm Andrew Bolsh. I live in St. Louis County District 3. And my shop is up the road a little bit at McKenzie and Watson in St. Louis County District 5. I travel this path twice a day, roughly six days a week. And quite honestly, it's a epic nightmare as it sits right now. There is not much center turn lane. They added a approximately maybe 100-foot section about two years ago or a year and a half ago, trying to get into Grasso Plaza. And that has mitigated some issues there. But not many. The, I would really not like to see a car wash there. We have the same style car wash 2.8 miles west on Gravoy already. And about 2.9 miles north at McKenzie and Watson, which is a waterway. There's been a lot of crashes at this intersection. And that is with the restaurant not even being open very much. And especially not much during the pandemic. The other thing, you mentioned that keep existing entrance and exit except for the side one. That is really wild to me because that was built in the late 70s, maybe early 80s when they updated that entrance for the Wendy's Restaurant there. But the traffic count was much, much, much lower back then in 19 than it is now. There's no possible way a car wash could function in that area with the existing entrances, no middle turn lane, and no right turn lane or no left turn lane. It is a disaster right now, traffic-wise. And I am against it as a business owner in the district. Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Okay, next will be Michael Burton. Michael, you are unmuted to give your comment.
Thank you. My name is Michael Burton. I want to thank Gail Choate and the Planning and Zoning Commission for taking the time to hear us out here tonight. Many of us here in Afton thought that we were going to get a new bread company with a drive-thru, which a lot of us were really excited about. And I think right now the community has kind of been blindsided by this potential deal. This space here, this area, is surrounded by our local grocery store, hardware store, post office, fitness center, bread company, along with other mom and pop, you know, small businesses. I cannot stress this enough when it comes to this potential development. This is a great little chunk of land in Afton with lots of character. And this will absolutely take away from that. That's really my biggest problem with it. If you wouldn't build a storage unit there, you wouldn't build a car wash there. The only other thing I want to reiterate is we have plenty of car washes in the area. Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Okay, if you have spoken, if you could unclick your raise hand. I don't see any other speakers, but if any, oh wait, here we go. Next will be Kat Embry. Kat, you are unmuted.
I think that, I'm a longtime resident of Afton, and I'm raising a family here, and I just really think that area is already congested enough, and I already think that it gets a little crazy during high-traffic times. And I think adding a car wash there is just not the right fit, especially when we already have enough, in my opinion.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next will be Amy Sandbox. Amy, you are unmuted.
I am a resident of the city of Lakeshire. And I feel like a car wash is not necessarily the best thing for that little area right there. We already have a car wash across the street from the Verizon Wireless. I think that the little area there would benefit more from something you know, like a mom and, another little mom and pop. I know that's really hard to do with the pandemic, but I just feel like the car wash is not necessarily something that's going to you know, bring you know, what we really need to the area, maybe more, you know, like that another little restaurant, something to bring more people to the area, not necessarily a car wash. We have one just around the corner from the Verizon. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if anyone else would like to speak regarding this petition, please click the raise hand button next to your name. Otherwise, I don't see any more, Mr. Hilsinger.
Okay, petitioner, can you come back up or online?
Absolutely, I'm here.
Okay, you want to answer some of the items brought up? First was the runoff to to Lutheran South.
Yes, sir, absolutely. I just pulled up the existing condition sheet of our plan set. And as you can see, it has no curbing to the south and actually runs directly off onto the Lutheran Heights property. And what we're going to do, like I said before, is add a little bit of green space on all sides, including the south interior, and what we're going to do is collect it in pipes and run it through a hydrodynamic separator. All of these things will slow the amount of water and reduce the amount of runoff onto the, the shared site. And so hopefully that addresses some of his issues. It'll also clean the water. That's what a hydrodynamic separator is for, actually, is to clean the trash from a site before it leaves the site. And so hopefully that takes care of some of his concerns. And then to cover, I believe the rest of the comments were more so geared towards traffic.
Traffic and congestion?
Yes, sir. And one of the things that I'd like to hit on, if I could, and on this existing condition sheet, we show what's essentially the existing entrance right here, the double entrance is what I'll call it. And it's going to stay roughly the same. Now, over here, we're going to take this to the east completely out of the equation. So we're actually going to give less access to this and from this for traffic. That'll help direct it where, where it should be instead of congesting Gravoy Road more and more. And one of the other topics that was brought up was the previous owner or petitioner had requested a bread company to be put in. And this site is either equivalent or less than that as far as traffic is concerned as a daily flow. And so the current zoning allows many different kinds of restaurants. Some of them wouldn't have as much flow as a bread company. Some of them may have more than a bread company. It's kind of hard to say, but right now, we're talking about something that's going to be there or less. And so we're actually going to help those congestion issues that may pop up in the future.
We do have one more comment, a public comment. Someone who was unable to raise their hand. If that's all right, Mr. Hilsinger?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, Terry Pellic. Terry, you are unmuted. All right. Terry? Terry? Okay. Yes. We can hear you. Terry, we're actually having some trouble hearing you. I don't know. I'm not, or maybe I'm not hearing clearly. Is that?
Oh, I could not hear clearly.
It's all broken up. We can't.
It's pretty, it's pretty broken, yes. Terry, if you would type your comment, I could read it out loud. We do have a couple of other speakers, but if Terry, if you would type your comment into the chat, I can read it to the commission.
We did, we did receive her email also.
Okay, next speaker. Can you, are you guys hearing me okay?
Yes.
Okay, next speaker will be Alan Rung. Alan? You are unmuted.
Okay, thank you. And just let me make sure everybody can hear me.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Alan. Thank you for hearing us. I wanted to follow on with the question and ask Steve just to clarify. Alan, I'm the president associated with Lutheran High School South. We share the south boundary. Myron Kane is also on my team for facilities. Our question was really, you clarified you were going to do, be doing collection of surface waters and then some centrifuging or some kind of cleaning. That's all well and good. We wanted to make sure that any surface water collected was being routed through an MSD system storm drain and not then returned as surface water or basically piped regardless of how clean it is. We, we want to stop the flow of surface water onto the Lutheran South property on the south side of the property. So will, will the water be collected? Is there a zoning requirement that that be, that an MSD storm drain be used? Or is surface jettisoning allowed under zoning?
Okay, the next. There's one more comment, I believe.
Okay.
Yes.
From Lori Tracus.
Okay, hold on one second, Lori. This is Gail Shout. I'm the acting director of planning. I just wanted to address that last question, but MSD requires all the plans to be developed and approved through them. They're secondary agency to St. Louis County, and they submitted comments with regard to this application. And it's not a zoning requirement, but it is an MSD requirement to adhere to all of their, it says, stormwater will not be allowed to enter the sanitary sewers through the car wash. Obviously, they have to submit all their detailed plans to MSD. Can't disturb more than one acre or will disturb more than one acre, so they have to do quality BMTs. Again, all of that, all of those detailed plans will be submitted and reviewed and approved by MSDs separate from St. Louis County.
Okay.
Okay, we'll go to Lori Tracus. Lori, you are unmuted to give your comment.
Thanks, Mel. I just had a question in looking at the site. I'm assuming those lines are, are those vacuum bays? And if so, how many vacuum bays would there be? Are they parking spots? You can't really tell on the diagram. Thank you.
Okay, we'll ask them to answer that. Do we have anyone else?
I believe that is all the comment.
Okay. Steve, can you address the number of vacuum bays?
Yes, sir. There will be 12 of them.
Okay.
And how many parking spots, Steve?
There will be four.
Did you say four parking spots?
Yeah, four designated only as parking. The vacuum base can also be used as parking, but only four designated only as parking.
Okay.
It's probably not helping that you're showing the site plan for the existing restaurant. Why don't you just put the other site plan up?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you.
No problem at all.
Commissioners, any questions? Seeing none. This will conclude this hearing. Gail, is that it for the evening?
Yes, sir. That's all we have tonight. We do not have any site plans.
Okay, we need a motion to adjourn. Anyone?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Discussion, seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
I say we're adjourned until January, is that correct, Gail?
Yes, it is. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and Happy Holidays, everybody.
Merry Christmas to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. See you next year.
Hey, you have to smile.